Good evening, I'm going to call this January 8, 2024 meeting of the Savania Board of Education to order. Adam, can you call the roll?
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Conklin?
Here.
Ms. LaVelez?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here. Please stand for the Fledge of Religions.
At Fledge of Religions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move. Really go do it.
I'm sorry, my dad's from Michigan, Dan, I can't help it.
Good afternoon, everyone, it's my pleasure to present item 2.1 this evening, where we have Darren Stott here, that will be providing us with a presentation of our new school's security cameras. But I believe Cheryl was not able to be here tonight, she had an unworked day, but we appreciate you being here.
We love to hear from Darren.
Yeah, Darren actually trained Tim and I just last week on the new cameras, and he did an outstanding job for some of us that moved a little slower than others, so it was great. Some of us needed some accommodations, he did a fantastic job, so I'll turn it over to you, Darren, thank you for being here.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll hopefully keep it brief. Do you really need me to spell my name?
Yeah, talk slowly.
Slowly.
Slowly, Darren. No, you do not need to spell your name.
So for those that, I think I've met all of you at some point in time, I'm Assistant Director of Technology at Savania Schools, so. And we did the training last week, it was informal training, because we actually don't, as a team, receive our training until March, it's a two-day official training from the system, but we did want to spend a little bit of time talking about, if you remember last year, the district was awarded $1.2 million grant, I believe, $100,000 for each school. And so we wanted to talk about how those funds were spent a little bit. And so there were several things that were like ancillary items, there's a lot of displays that are getting updated in the safe rooms with larger screens to watch the cameras, some radios that were updated in some buildings. Cheryl did want me to share that there were eight buildings that were going to be able to replace the P A systems, and they were, their and Dyer need to be replaced. For example, in Maplewood today, we had trouble with it going down this afternoon, we were able to get it back up, but that's an important expenditure, we're able to spend on that. But by and large, the camera system in our district was very antiquated. I've been here 15 years, and many of the cameras that were in the buildings and the recording systems have been there since I started in 2009. So this new system includes servers, cameras, and a security suite of software. And gonna talk about it just briefly, but then I'd like to do like a live demo and just show you some of the features and see if you have any questions on that. So there's 13 servers with this new system, one for each building. Essentially, the server's what's housing all the video footage for the building. And then there's an overarching server that brings them all together and actually provides us access to not only a mobile app, but a web application, I shouldn't hear this shortly. 200 plus brand-new cameras are being installed in the buildings, nearly complete. There'll be some existing, or outdoor cameras will be installed in the spring, depending on the weather and the conditions. And I think around 300 and some existing cameras were still compatible in this system. So they brought them all into one system, so we have one area to go with everything. And I think the biggest thing for our team and Dr. Motley, as we were talking, is the accessibility of the system. The old system, sometimes we had to go to the building to pull footage. It wasn't easy to share with the building principal if they were looking for stuff. So we can access this from in the district, outside the district, through a secure web app and the mobile app as well, so. If you don't mind, I'll show you really quick what the web app looks like, just get signed in here. I'm always nervous doing like a live demo of something on the web, so. So as a district user, when you, when you first sign in, the first thing you're gonna see is an overlay of the Savania area. And the overlay, as you can see, the little red blotches there are actually the buildings within the district. If I'm a building principal, I'm only gonna have access to my building. So for example, if I go in to record, what they're gonna see is their building now. And what's really nice about this is we can actually place these cameras on the building map within the system, and they can easily see the cameras just by hovering over them. So it goes right to a live view of that footage in the building, okay? If you see different, it's a little hard for me to see from back here, but there's cameras in close proximity of each other, there's a number four there towards the front of the building of McCord. If I just zoom in with my mouse wheel here, I can see now those four different cameras. So if I hover over, I'll see that particular view, just outside the office of McCord, looking down towards the door, and then down towards the cafeteria, and then that other camera, I believe, works, looks down the other hallway. So that's a quick way for the building principals to see footage directly in their building. All right, if I'm a district user, I can quickly switch to another, another building that way as well. Let me just go in and I'll show you the tile view, which is, if you've got cameras at home, it's very similar to that. So let's pull up a couple cameras here to record, just drag them over to my tiles. So these are live footage, I've got four views right here in the upper right. If I wanted to switch to a different tile layout, I could do that, so I could have like a larger camera with some different cameras around that. My view can be different than Tim's view, different than Dr. Motley's view, and they can see different cameras that way. If I want to see a larger view, I can quickly just go in and double-click on a camera, I can see that one full screen, and double-click, go back to it. Prior, prior to this system, really to pull footage was, it wasn't hard, but it was a little hard to share that footage. And it was also very green. So if I want to pull up, for example, this is McCord's cafeteria, I can go down here to the bottom middle and just say "live view", I want to switch to, let's go to maybe December 14th at noon. There should be some pictures. So you can see instantly, I have footage from McCord cafeteria during lunchtime.
I was gonna ask, like, how long, I mean, does that just here forever, like, how long?
So.
Is it real?
So what would happen in the old system is, we would only get about two weeks of footage, just because it was really old, and we couldn't, it would only store so much. These new cameras are gonna store a ton more. Each server has three 12-kilobyte dry key, which is gonna store a ton of footage. And the way it'll work is, it's gonna be like first in, first out. So six months from now, if we run out of space on that, it'll delete the oldest footage.
And can you zoom on these if you want to zoom?
Yeah, a lot of the cameras do have zoom capabilities, so I can just quickly on a mouse wheel zoom in here. And if you notice in the upper right, as soon as I zoom, I can see the full area, and there's a square around that. So if I just take that square, I can quickly drag around the cafeteria here, and then I can just zoom back out. Okay? One of the other things that I think is really cool about this, let me just quickly, let's, let's pretend there's a food fight in this cafeteria here. In the lower right corner, there's a bookmark, and I can set a bookmark right here, and I can just say "food fight", and it's gonna mark that bookmark, it'll allow me to find it easily later. But what I can do with that bookmark is, I can just go into the report section, and run the bookmark report, I'll go ahead and pull it for that date. So by default, it'll show you the bookmarks in the last one hour? Let me just go ahead and generate that. Okay, so you can see I have a couple here, I was just playing with, so, so here we go, "food fight", it's got my username, Savania Admin in there, if Dr. Motley did it, it would show her username. But when I click on that bookmark, immediately to the right, I have a five-minute clip of that reserved. And I can download that footage, I can, I can put it back, say I want to go seven minutes back or two minutes for a record, I can do that. But no longer do I need to really download that footage, I can actually just go into the share icon right here, and I could type a little note, the video, and I can share it to any user in the system, so I can go right now and share this with Dr. Motley, and select, and share. When I do that, she has the app on her mobile phone, she's gonna get a notice right away that I shared camera footage with her, and she can click on and watch that clip right away. So accessibility is huge with this system. All the building principals have been trained, the two resource officers at Norview and Southview have already been trained as well. Norview's actually getting a new one starting tomorrow, so I'm gonna work with them. And then Melissa McDonald and I have talked, and we're gonna work with the Safety and Security Committee and make sure police and fire have access to or from outside the district. Any questions about what you saw here?
I'm sure I know the answers, but other bus cameras are not tied into the system, that's a whole separate system?
Separate system, yep.
The, you said the police and fire will have access, will they have access in an emergency or access just all the time?
Well, however we want to set that up in the district, we can, we can set it up. I do know that the resource officers at each school have an account for that particular stuff. Yeah, great, great question. So I showed, I showed you the web app, there's a mobile app that's very similar to this interchangement. There's a full security suite of software that we're getting a two-day training on in March, and that's gonna have some of that forensic-type features where, you know, if Tim walked in a building in a red shirt and I tagged him, it'll trace, it could trace him through the different camera views and keep them in sequential order. So if we had someone in the building, we could easily track them through there. I don't know what all it does yet, I'm excited to hear about it, but that comes in March. It's a, it's a two-day like Genetex certification, which is what this system is called, all these cameras.
So you may have said this, how, I know you said we have so many terabytes and it's just as it fills up, it'll, do you know how, like, will we be able to save like a whole year's worth of footage, or how, do you know, have a feel for how long?
I don't know, I mean, I can ask to find out based on the specs that gives the service, but we're not even close. And I know we've had, we've had the cameras recording in the system for about eight and a half months now, and so we have that.
Generally, that's accomplished, being for policy, like, how long are videos supposed to be kept?
So we can look at that, yeah.
And all buildings got this system?
Yes.
Even the 4747, or?
Yeah, there's a few cameras, well, there's, right now, there's an outdoor camera on the corner over here at 47, there's a few at the support building where I'm at, those all got brought into the system. We have some additional cameras that were, outdoor cameras that were purchased as part of this grant, that weren't part of the initial install, and then we're gonna be looking at filling some gaps. For example, when the stadium goes up at Norview, we have some cameras allocated going into the building.
So what kind of coverage do we have in all the buildings, like, pretty well covered, every hallway?
Should be, for example, Norview has 85 cameras.
And do any of them go in, is it all hallways and common areas, or are they in classrooms at all?
No classrooms.
No classrooms.
No classrooms, yeah. Hallways, common areas.
Media center, cafeteria, hallways.
Yeah. Cafeteria, common, media center, stairwells, things like that.
Sure.
Pointing, pointing outside restrooms, not in restrooms, but outside restrooms, towards stairwells, things like that.
Those gyms, not gyms?
Gym, gym.
Would they be able to blur faces if we need to find this?
I suspect the, the full software, well, I have software in my office that I've used for years. Anytime we get like a bus camera footage and we say we need to blur face, I can do it, I can pull the footage down and they do it. I would suspect this system.
Adam, do you want to watch a couple hours of footage?
No, I think I'm good. So unless you guys have any other questions, I'm done?
Thank you.
Yeah?
Love that, thank you, Darren.
What's that?
Audio?
Yeah, that, so the question was, do the new cameras have audio, a lot of the cameras do have audio capabilities. If there's certain areas that we want to record audio on, we gotta work with local principals and see their policy when we end.
Our next presentation is from Director Andrea. Andrea Johnson, thank you Andrea for being here today. We appreciate it. This is, we are revisiting actually a topic here at Savania Schools. We had about two years ago a presentation on PE waivers, and what I've done is asked Andrea to come and present tonight and just give us an update, refresh our minds, and make us a little bit re-familiar, if you will, with the law and the options that we have. So thank you, Andrea.
Thank you. So what I have given you, I have a collection of some information that you have in front of you. What I did is I gave you a copy of the guidelines, some frequently asked questions, and some other information, but I'd just like to highlight a few things for us tonight. What I have here, no, just some background, our PE waiver, so this is a state policy, and this is per Ohio Revised Code. And what this policy allows students to do is it allows them to be excused from taking physical education as a graduation requirement. So the state of Ohio requires every student earning a diploma to have .5 credits in physical education, and this waiver policy allows students to be excused from that, but it does stipulate that participation must be two full seasons in an approved activity. Now, these activities are determined by the state, these are not locally determined, so there's a list of guidelines for what activities are, are, or students are able to use. So this is a combination of athletics and then marching band, for instance. So no, any district that chooses to implement this as a policy, no, is bound and behold to that list. So I did want to give you that list there. Just a few quick facts, any district in the state of Ohio that would like to implement this policy, you know, this does require a board of education to approve the policy. Does, there is one in Neola that has a sample, so there's one in existence. And please understand that students must apply for this waiver, I think that is one detail that is very important to take into account. This is not an automatic application, this is an application process. So any student who wants to take advantage, there is a process in place that's outlined as well in policy that would allow students to take advantage, and this isn't graduation credit. This essentially waives the requirement to complete PE through a class. And as I said earlier, it only applies to certain activities. Students still must earn the required number of credits to graduate. So any student who earns a diploma from Norview or Southview is required to complete 22 credits. That does not change whether a student takes advantage of this policy or not, the student still must earn 22 credits to earn a diploma. What this does is it gives some flexibility for a student for how they're going to obtain some of these credits. As I said, the requirement for physical education for any student earning a diploma is one-half or .5 units of physical education. Now, a typical PE class is worth .25 credits, so essentially, any student taking PE in, in school would complete two courses of physical education, and that is stipulated actually as 120 minutes of instruction total. So it does go down to the minute when students are, we as a district are looking at what goes into high school credit for a PE class. One thing that, you know, it comes up as a question, okay? A district decides, let's say, to pursue this and look into this waiver as a policy, one of the first questions that comes up is, can this be applied retroactively? And any district that would choose to, you know, go in this direction, no, it's not a retroactive policy. So at such a point that a board would decide to move forward with this, those two seasons would begin after the implementation of the policy, so that's a very specific date. And then students would begin to be able to apply for that.
So a quick question, so if we decided to do this, it wouldn't start till next semester? So like, anything this semester wouldn't count?
It would, correct, it would be the season, yes, the next, the start of the next season. Yes. One other common question that comes up is, okay, so we've looked at that list of activities that are allowed, the interscholastic, athletics, marching band, cheerleading, show choir, et cetera. One question that comes up, you know, is a student able to use, let's say, a non-school-sponsored athletic? Typically, the example is, okay, if I have a student who is on the softball team, and that student also participates in travel softball, can that student use non-school-sponsored activities? And the answer is no. So this is strictly interscholastic or school-sponsored activities that qualify for this PE waiver.
Would esports qualify? I mean, how is athletics defined?
So athletics are defined as, as school-sponsored, so they exist here at school, there is a school employee that accesses the coach or the advisor. For marching band in particular, that has to have a component of outside the regular classroom for marching band to, to qualify for that waiver.
There seems to be a.
Esports.
Yeah, a physical component.
There's a physical component.
So esports would not count, is what I'm asking.
Is the O H S A, does it have to be an O H S A sanction?
There is, there's language in O H S A policy that stipulates what counts as a sanctioned sport. I don't believe it does, no, and I think, I think.
So is dance, cougarettes, that's dance, right?
I think this, cougarettes was on the first.
Cougarettes were on there because I think, yes.
But then comparable, Norview's dance team wasn't mentioned, you know, wasn't mentioned, so.
It should be, though.
I'm assuming.
And you said that activities are defined by the state?
Yes.
Are the, like, theater, is that part of it or no?
It is not, no.
So show choir because, is that?
Because there is a physical component.
And we do not have show choir. Got it.
Yes, yes, that's correct. So the next question that comes up, are there other requirements for curriculum credits? So as I said earlier, students must still earn 22 credits to graduate. So if a student applies to participate in the PE waiver process, that student still must earn 22 credits. The policy stipulates that a student must then choose .5 credits in some other discipline, some other, it could be any of, any other elective credit really, that would substitute for that PE credit, but the total number of credits does not change, it just changes where the student is in earning those credits.
So a student could still take a wellness course, or they could take an extra art course, or something of that nature, in order to complete their requirements from the Ohio Department of Education?
Could they still choose to take a PE class?
They can choose to take a PE class, but they need to meet the 22 credits in something other than PE. So a student who takes advantage of the PE waiver process, you know, they're essentially saying, all my physical education for graduation is going to be taken care of with one of those approved activities.
So if they get a waiver, but electives still take PE class, that would not count that?
It doesn't count as PE credit now.
But if you're gonna take PE class, you don't get a waiver?
What about the electives, we have, like, fundamentals of coaching or weight training, would that count or no, because it still falls under the PE?
It would still fall, yes.
So this, so this list of course offerings, Norview, Southview, physical education, like, sports, weight training, then if those wouldn't count, you'd get a waiver?
If a student, you mean, as in they either.
You don't.
So if, so if, if you get the waiver and then take advanced weightlifting, that does not count then towards graduation?
It does not count as.
You just wouldn't get the waiver?
You wouldn't, correct.
Right, the credit counts, just not, it's not considered a gym class, because you got the waiver.
Because you used the waiver. What does it count as, just a general?
Just elective, it'd be just regular.
So if you got the waiver and wanted to take weightlifting, you could still take it?
Absolutely.
It would still give you credit for graduation?
There are many students too.
You'd still get credit for graduation for it, is the question.
It's one of your.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Close the gap of the 22.
It doesn't reduce you to 21 and a half.
Correct.
Coaching or the weightlifting, those classes, is it, would they still be a quarter of credit?
Those are, I believe those are .5.
Are they to go back and look at her?
I don't have her program study.
It, you don't have credit.
I think they were.
I think they're half-credit because they're semester.
So are the students who are currently taking PE1 and then taking that as a PE2, getting .75 PE credits instead of .5 PE credits?
Are they allowed to take more than just PE2? Yeah, I understand, yeah, because you're saying I took PE1 as a quarter of credit, and then I took weightlifting, and that's a half of credit, so do they now have .75 of credit instead of .5?
And we specify, if you go back, and you can see this on me, where if you go back and you look at our program studies, you know, it's very specifically lined as far as what the prerequisites are. So they're, they are taken in a sequential order if a student is looking to get PE credit through classroom instruction.
If we did this, would we still offer summer gym?
That would be a discussion, it is, there is a lot of benefit, let me see, for our student population, for offering summer gym. But it is a discussion.
Is there any way to figure out how many students at Perrysburg or Anthony Wayne districts that have adopted the waiver, and can we just get PE classes?
Yes, I can reach out.
I'd like to know that.
What I did is I collected just some general information, you know, who offers it, what kind of courses are still offered at the area districts, and in that last page of the information I provided, it shows all of the course offerings. Every district in that very last page offers PE waivers, except Napoleon. So any of those districts that you're looking at, they do offer PE waivers to their students, and then they are still able to offer those PE electives and still as courses as well.
So Perrysburg just does physical education A and physical education B, and they don't have any of these, like, weightlifting or fun specialty classes?
But in Whitmer, it looks like they don't have physical education, it's all specialized classes. Oh wait, PE team, sports, and physical education A and B, okay.
And what a couple of these districts do, so they, they can name the course, something a little bit creative that might be, you know, individual to them, but looking at the actual standards of physical education, they just align that course to.
So there are state requirements for those physical education A and B?
There are standards that guide that.
Andrea, did you have this option in your last district?
Yes.
And how did it bode over time, did you see more students taking advantage of it, sticking with it, kind of where Tammy was going?
Sure.
What was the sustainability with kids taking advantage of it?
There, there was not a huge difference in enrollment per se prior to PE waiver adoption and after PE waiver adoption. There were still, I can't give you the exact number, but as many students who were opting to enroll in physical education classes, students who, and one thing that is, you know, unique to this is, we're talking about two full seasons. So if you're talking about a student, let's say, who participates in one sport, you're talking about then two years. Let's say, I play soccer, I'm playing soccer one full season, and then the following year, I'm playing soccer again. So that's two full seasons that that student would need to participate in to count towards the waiver. But we have a lot of students who opt to take physical education courses because it's an area of interest, it's an area of need, being physically active. And if you look at, like, I can say, the credential, like, sports credentialing, you know, there is actually a credential now that the state of Ohio offers for graduation credit. So students who aren't participating in that course, they have another option. So there's still incentive for students to enroll in those classes. It just looks a little bit differently when we're talking about transcript and credit and graduation.
So, quick, I think I know the answer is, but so there's 12 schools on this list, I'm assuming these are all the N L L schools?
I, I pulled, yes, I pulled the N L L schools, and then I also pulled geographically close districts.
And I believe we're the only school on this list that does not have the waiver, right?
Napoleon.
Napoleon does, you know, okay.
Yes. And geographically, Rossford also doesn't have it.
Just to go back to the previous question, too, about those other electives, lifetime sports, weight training, weightlifting, yoga is all a quarter of a credit, but the principal of officiating is a half of credit, just because you get a credential, you need to ask someone out, that's the one.
Thank you.
Should I ask for a permit? I don't know.
I have a best year, I have to look into that.
You can only say that for like a month. You get like a month.
I have heard, he gets three days.
This week. They already passed.
We have, we have fewer than 20 enrolled, specifically in Norview, I can speak to that.
Principal's officiating.
And all the students enrolled for a semester did earn the officiating credential for a semester, and now we're looking forward to, you know, another semester.
So with that officiating class, can they go out to the rec and get a job officiating?
That's, that's pretty awesome.
Which is a need in the area across the state, not across the nation, but we here across the state. They earn Dyer's either.
Can they earn higher be to officiate?
And we see that course, it appears on more programs and studies and other districts. It's interesting to see that.
I believe we're partnering with the rec in the areas in NLLs because they've talked about finding us with me this summer. I believe part of the exam was at the rec, like officiating, like scrimmage or something.
My daughter's starting yoga and meditation tomorrow.
Only if there's school.
Maybe. If there's school.
No pressure. No pressure.
So a common question that comes up, what if a student quits or gets cut? The statute says participation for the full two seasons. So the student would need to see that entire season through from start to finish. And if a student decided to stop playing that sport or no longer participate, then that could not be used to be the requirement, so.
And the level, like bar CJB doesn't matter?
But it has to be two full seasons. So I can't play basketball my freshman year and then not do it again and earn one of my PE's. It has to be both to link both, correct? It's all or nothing?
It's two full seasons. Now I could-
So let's say I just did it one year.
So that would be half of it. I could go out for a different sport the next year and use that as my second full season. Or it's common, we've, in other districts, for students, let's say, to participate in a marching band and then maybe play a spring sport. That's two full seasons.
Okay.
You could get it done if you're playing football and baseball or volleyball and basketball.
If you did marching band and soccer, both in the same season, would that count as two?
Yes, yes. And a season is not defined by a certain amount of time. It's the duration of the activity. So marching band may actually take more-
A whole year.
It takes a year.
Yes. Yes, it's a whole year.
So if you did marching band your freshman year, would that count for two seasons?
If it's defined, if marching band of participation is, is an entire year, it's just one.
Oh, okay.
So let me ask this, if, and I just want to make sure I'm clear. If, let's say somebody waits and we enact this waiver and then they play a sport their freshman year and then gets to senior year and they never played a second sport, so they've gotta hurry up and take it. Do they have to take physical education or do one of these other offerings qualify? Or under the state standards, does it have to be that physical education?
They have to take both, wouldn't they?
It would be, yeah, two classes, two quarters of physical education.
Okay.
So are hard to be able to monitor that, like to make sure that people don't reach their senior year and still need two full PE credits?
So it's common when boards look at policies like this to put into practice, okay, this by the end of, let's say, sophomore year or about the end of junior year, a student would need to complete two full seasons to allow for time should a student then need to be enrolled in PE courses moving forward. So, and that, that can be up for discussion. It looks different in different places.
It does, and I think that's also where we can use the expertise of Darren back there. He's very good at writing programs to help us track a number of different things. There, it may come into play of some type of tracking system with our counselors and making sure that parents are made aware, like this, your child needs your two PE cred or your PE credits, what does this look like? Because it can be, it can be tricky. You don't want someone to not graduate because they, they rested on their laurels. But on the other hand, too, we have to consider those kids who are moving in and making sure they're informed and what do they have, tracking it from another school district. If they're coming in from Anthony Wayne, do they already have it? So we're not telling them they have a schedule for it.
Yeah, they could get confused if they have one sport and then they have to stay on that. I think Harrisburg's board policy speaks to a timeframe that they have to have it done by.
Yeah, a lot of districts, I don't know if I've ever seen any that allowed, allowed to go into that senior year. Just because, say, I've gotta run track to get this credit and life gets in the way and you can't finish that and then you're like, oh my gosh, you can't graduate.
So freshman through junior.
Usually.
If they get injured, I mean.
Oh, never thought about that.
That's what I was saying, if they're gonna be injured, they're gonna practice and you're out.
I mean, sometimes kids are injured, they stay on the teams though, like they're not, they're not competing. So what do we do with that? I mean, if they're still showing up, but they're not doing anything.
I don't know if there's any, we couldn't do gym. But if they're part of the team, so if I have ACL and I'm sitting for the rest of the football season and I only play two games, I'm still on the team. So it's still counted as participates, yeah.
And I think Andrea, that includes code of conduct as well. Even though you may be suspended for 20% of the season, you can still practice and be a part of that team.
So it doesn't say active participation?
Right, but I mean, couldn't that encourage, could, phantom injuries?
We don't, we don't want to encourage phantom injuries.
Yeah, that's a, people have to tend to that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I've, I've seen a lot of that. It could happen, right? It could happen.
Let's hope though that our coaches and our counselors and our parents would be able to help us maneuver that type of situation, too.
So I think this came up already, next question. Students use one PE course in one season to meet their requirement for graduation. As in a mixed match and no? The statute says you need to either commit, it's two seasons, or you're looking at PE. So there's no partial excuse, which encourages students, no, when they're deciding to apply for the waiver, no, it encourages that pre-planning because it's not a mixed match type situation. And can students participate in different activities, different seasons? That was one example that we gave, yes. For example, students who play soccer could use this as activity one, basketball as activity two, or soccer and marching band or whatever. These may be as long as two full seasons.
When we were discussing this last time, someone had expressed a concern that students might join, for example, marching band to avoid the PE requirement, which I thought was unlikely because marching band's a pretty big commitment. But the concern that was expressed was, are the, for example, band directors on board with this and this potential influx of students who are joining that to get the waiver? I mean, have, have there been any discussions like that with the band directors?
I have not had conversations with the band directors. You know, when you're talking about something like marching band, you're also talking about that course impact as well. So I mean, you're talking about-
Right.
I think that's pretty far. Band is way bigger commitment.
I do too, yes.
I don't think, you can find that out this year.
I would see someone joining, yeah. I would see someone joining track for the purpose of, oh, I'm going to go and join track and do long jump, or is long jump, I can say that, in anticipation and then kind of like, eh, so it's not my niche, but I'm part of the team and I'm gonna go for the social part. I could see that.
Yeah, but I don't think the coaches are gonna let them not practice or not practice.
They won't, but they might not be the most actively involved.
Well, that's okay, as long as they're participating.
But they're there, they're showing up, they're there.
If somebody is cut from soccer and then immediately goes to cross country, does that count or not?
Soccer, I don't think, soccer wouldn't count if they're cut.
But I mean, if they, if they're cut and then they switch over to cross country or in the same season?
Well, they can't do it on behalf of your cut or your cut.
It wouldn't be the full season then because it's maybe, well, it would be the full competitive season, I guess.
Yeah.
Because if you're cut from soccer, you're cut to the beginning of the year, so you would go where you know, enroll the whole season.
Some people who are cut would have potentially a chance.
So you're talking about cutting, it's a tryout sport, you didn't make the team, you take them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a legitimate, I suppose all of the no-cut sports, which there's several where everybody that goes out might have some influx. But I, I guess it still meet, ultimately, whether that's true or not, it still means the physical requirement and still-
Right.
It's still meeting what we're trying to accomplish, which is to get kids physical. Well, the other part is there's a lot to sports outside of even that. I may not be the fastest on the team, but I'm still part of the team. There are a lot of things that I'm going to learn from the team. And if I improve my own personal time, as a person that ran in the relay, you're competing against yourself sometimes and improving your own self and developing perhaps a life skill, especially for cross country or again, long distance. There's a lot more. And if you're increasing physical activity and exposing children to a sport and a lifestyle, it's more than just the competition, like the game tonight. Did I say that? I'm sorry, too much?
I'm a fan of this, you know, my, I used this event before. My daughter, she had to, she had, she had to quit orchestra to take PE, but she ran cross country. So she ran all year round, but she couldn't take summer gym because cross country trains all summer long at nine in the morning. So the only way she could've gotten her PE credits is to drop orchestra, which I think was a fantastic thing for her to be in.
Right.
And she didn't want to do it. So, you know, there's, you know, I think there's definite situations where this is.
No, yeah, I, I'm also in favor. I think we do, we have a great physical education program K through eight and those, and they, and, and in high school also. But I think when they get to that high school level, we should be ready to allow the students to branch out into different team sports or to take some of these other type electives, I think are great. I mean, I think it's always important to stay physical, but I think this, this, this opportunity just gives the kids who are playing sports the chance to fill their schedule with other things.
Flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's someone, summer gym, because like my kids were not athletic, so they weren't doing any sports, but they both took summer gym because they wanted to back their schedule more with AP classes and other.
Right.
You know, they didn't have a whole.
Still have a place for sure. They're still, I don't think everyone's gonna rush to get this waiver and join the sport if they're not already predisposed to play sports, I think. I think summer gym, and a lot of people enjoy summer gym, so.
Yeah, an important part of those questions, I think, ties into what I said earlier is this is not, it's not something that's automatically awarded. No, there's an intent to participate. So if you're, if you are talking about a student who is looking ahead and planning, you know, there are course descriptions, there are, what's my career plan? What kind of pathway do I want to follow? And this can help support that, but it gives students more information. So it is up to the student to declare his or her intent to participate in this PE waiver. So it's not just an automatic thing. And then that activity participation, you know, we kind of touched on that a little bit, that has to be verified by the coach or advisor of that school-sponsored activity. So there is someone who is signing up on that. It's Dr. Motley side, you know, there's a tracking component to it that Darren can be an excellent help with. But it is, it is a scripted process. So if this is a conversation that we're going to continue, no, there are questions, but there are options that districts have in order to meet those requirements. And then I did pull, you know, area districts that are offering PE waivers. So geographically, these are the districts close to us. And then, as I said, I did pull PE offerings and, and course offerings of the area districts and then also NLL districts, so that you could see that as well. And I will say, you know, a few of those that appear on that list, some of those course offerings have changed. I can share with you just anecdotally that there's been conversation among the area districts, the curriculum directors, asking how districts are approaching this and what kinds of elective courses and what kind of PE courses the districts are offering and are we moving towards certain offerings and away from others? So we're, we're responsive to this conversation. But it is, it is an interesting process. So some of the course offerings that I gave to you are for this particular school year, but some of them have also been approved for the next school year. So, so it's kind of a combination of those. The sports officiating is the example I think of. All right. So the second thing that I gave you, you have some information there, some things that we talked about today and, you know, pretty really asked questions and so on, the guidelines there and that's additional information. Any questions that you have?
I think we probably cast it through our own.
I think so. Just wanted to double check. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate it.
Just in case it goes long, it gets a TV reason. How long can we keep out of here?
So we're now at the time for public participation for agenda items, and there are none. So we will move to public comment 4.1 for retire, rehire. Anyone for public comment? Okay. I don't have, there's not an action item, right?
Right.
Then I think we're back with you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.1, an approval of a field trip with Northview head coach Kevin Hazel to accompany the participants to Worcester for the Ohio speech and debate state finals.
A second. Any discussion? Okay, Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.2, an addendum regarding our college credit plus handbook as attached.
We should probably read that and talk about it a lot.
I think we should. Typically on page seven, I noticed there's-
It's like 23 pages, should we read it aloud?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, it's in your logo. We can take turns around while.
I will move approval.
Five more seconds.
We're gonna talk slower.
Comments or questions? I mean, what is the change?
Actually, Andrea and Tim.
Andrea.
Yeah, there really weren't many changes from last year to this year. It was really just making sure, like our course offerings, for instance, with our, the ones, the courses that we offer onsite, making sure that those are updated to reflect the correct course names. But 99% of those, Ohio revised code, it has not changed, but just making sure that we refresh.
Anyone else? Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Okay, I think you're with Mr. Tiber.
I think I'm gonna do them individually today or not.
You guys.
I recommend items 6.1 through 6.4 on a consent agenda basis. 6.1 is a licensed resignation. 6.2 are two licensed retirements. I want to thank Mary Carmody and Trace Eastep publicly for their service to the district. 6.3 is licensed extra duty and 6.4 is a licensed substitute.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 6.1 through 6.4.
Awesome. Any comments, questions? Okay, Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll recommend items 7.1 through 7.3 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1 are classified hires. 7.2 is a classified resignation and 7.3 are classified personnel changes.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 7.1 through 7.3.
A second.
Comments or questions? Okay, Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Okay, board reports. Right, do you have anything to add?
I don't think I have anything to report for the board.
You know, honestly, I'm not much, just mainly prevention wise. It was really like a holiday thing, so we didn't really do anything there. Foundation had a couple of weeks. Oh, you know, there was that meeting this morning, professional learning. I stayed for that keynote speaker, Joe was there also. She was great, a lot of joy, bringing joy into the classroom. It was, it was pretty interesting. Good turn. I have a little.
Thank you. I don't have anything. I think the only thing I would add is that the, the Doane University Concert Band is, it's a university in Nebraska, it's very small, about 1,000 students. Anyway, they're performing at Northview Friday night. They're on a marching band tour and they're actually staying close to Northview Band Host families for the evening to, assuming the weather permits. But the concert's at 7:30. It's free, but it is ticketed and the tickets are available on the Northview Band Orchestra Facebook page. Anybody else?
I have an announcement, if I may add one little comment, not under the board, but I think it's important for those who may be joining us tonight, live or later. It's my understanding that equipment has already started to show up at Northview, more equipment to arrive tomorrow. And I think the first day of demolition is scheduled for this Wednesday, weather permitting, I'm assuming. But it's pretty exciting, it's pretty exciting. Being over there today and just looking out the window at the stadium and I, I kind of get nostalgic sometimes. And I'm not doing this on purpose, Adam, sincerely. The stadium has been such a significant part of Slovenia since it was constructed like years. And it's a story of Slovenia and it kind of hurts my heart, it's bittersweet and it's exciting time, but sometimes you hate to see something come down. But what's coming next will be something great for our students and our families and our community. It'll be a newer stadium, it will be a bigger stadium, and we're throwing in a track too, which is something Northview has gone without for some time. And a concession.
Just throwing it in.
Just throwing it in. Slap it in there. But no, it's nostalgic. It's a special time in Slovenia, especially if you were in Northview Wildcat from years back. There are a lot of stories of people come back from, for class reunions and they love that stadium. So I just want to make everyone aware that if you want to go say goodbye or get a chunk of concrete, you might want to make sure you do that this week.
Stadium selfies?
Yes, stadium selfies, that's right. That's all I have. Thank you.
And we are now on that quite one, public participation of the non-agenda items, and there's no one here. Northview, is that session correct?
Um, the.
The purpose of annoying.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Adam, call the rolls.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
So, yeah, to stay.
I'm eating a germ.